This meeting of the Margate City Planning Board is called to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tom Collins? Clem Wazleski.
Here.
Mike Richmond.
Here.
Jim Gallantino. Margaret Guber Nalti.
Here.
Mike Cristaldi.
Here.
Craig Pomisano.
Here.
David Carter. Despina Hess. Remy Pelosi.
Here.
Joe DiGorolamo.
Here.
Rich Patterson.
Here. This meeting is being held in accordance with public notice thereof and pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notice of this -- Despina Hess has entered the building. Notice of this meeting was advertised in the press and a copy of same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that should you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the board administrator to sign the two Like to hear motion to approve the minutes of April 28, 2016.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Like to hear a motion to approve the resolutions and decisions amended number 10, 2016, Joseph Pitozy, number 21, 2016, Jack Plactor, number 22, 2016, Alan Swift, number 23, 2016, Atlantic Down Beach Associates LLC, number 24, 2016, Brian and Marcy Friedman, number 25, 2016, 8500 Ventnor Avenue LLC, number 26, 2016, Bruno and Catherine Dory.
Let me question.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. First, for the record, Tom Collins is recusing himself.
You too.
Remy Pelosi is recusing herself. Jim Gallantino is recusing himself. Joanne, we can't hear your case tonight. Joanne Amadeo, 422 North Gladstone Avenue, block 609.02, lot 41, in the S40 district to grant a C variance for a two-story deck setback, outdoor shower, front yard fence, landscaping, and possibly others. Taxes and water are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfying. Mr. McLaren?
Say good evening, Mr. McLaren.
Roger McLaren?
Can you say something about the inside? It will be better to see.
I do. Good evening, board. My report is dated May 25, 2016, in regard to Joanne Amadeo, 422 North Gladstone Avenue. Background, the applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to replace and add a second-floor deck, add a front yard fence, reduce landscape coverage, and install an outside shower. The property is a regularly shaped and has just three sides, or three yards, two front yards by definition and one side yard. Looking at the survey one more time, there is a frontage, I guess it's a side yard, 6.37 feet. I don't count that. The property is less triangular, it's a classic C1 criteria application. Variance is required, front yard setback, porches and second-floor deck, whereas five-foot is assumed the minimum and 1.08 feet is proposed. Existing setback to porch at grade is 1.08 feet. Front yard landscaping along Gilmar Circle, whereas 60 feet, or 60 percent is minimum required and 59.1 percent is proposed. Existing is 77 percent. Fence setback on the front yard, whereas no fences are permitted in front yard, a setback of five-foot front yard building is required and less than one foot is proposed. Outside shower setback, whereas three-foot minimum is required and less than three-foot is proposed. No waivers are requested. You can read my comments and my recommendations. My comments, the size and shape of the lot and reduction of number of yards causes a hardship for the applicant. The proposed porch and deck mirror the existing at-grade porch, so there are not any measurable average set-front setbacks along Gilmar Circle to abide by in that entire block as utilizing Gilmar as a rear yard. The aggregate combined front yard landscaping still exceeds the minimum required. The two adjacent properties have fencing up to or equal to the proximate property line along Gilmar Circle. There are not any street trees along either a street frontage and we recommend that streets, street trees be installed if the application is approved. The applicant shall provide testimony as to the decks, if they would be open below and will not be ever be enclosed in the future without variances. The only recommendation worthy of putting on the record at this point in time is the condition of approval shall be in the applicant receiving permits and the drainage for the outdoor shower needs to be added and shown on the plan to eliminate any runoff on the neighbor's property. Leave it up to the applicant.
Good evening. Brian Callahan, Royal Callahan Thompson, we have the applicant, Joanne Amadeo, property 422 North Gladstone. We're here to really renovate, as Roger went through his report. We have two existing suburban A1, which is the various planned colored. A2 is elevations and we broke out the upstairs deck to give you an idea if you want to put a couple chairs, tables on it. Really why you need the deck the same size as the below deck underneath. This is one of the three classic C1 cases that you can see on the island, because when you take a look at us, we have about 200 feet of frontage, which is hard to believe when you take a look at the property. And when you look at the next-door neighbor's houses, they go street to street, but technically their backyards are Gilmars that wraps around. So when you look at their properties, they have, the two houses right next to us have swimming pools which technically are in their front yards, but it's really the back of their homes. And they have six-foot fences in their front yards, which is really the back of their homes. So we think we'd have some justifications for the relief that we're asking. I have Tom Sedrain here, who's the architect. Let me just call him as a witness, we'll walk you through existing and proposed and go from there.
State of American Architects, please.
Tom Sedrain. Speak in the mic, please.
Thomas Sedrain.
Did you read your right name? So you had to have a written signature.
I do.
Tom, go through your qualifications real quick.
I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey since 1983.
Good enough.
Tom, wanted to walk him through Exhibit A1, explain to them what we have on site and what we're proposing.
Okay. On drawing A1, which you all have a copy of except it's not in color, the plan on the left here is the existing addition. It's a single-family, two-story home located on Gladstone and Gilmar. As Brian had said, you know, it's a front yard on basically two sides and a side yard on the third side there. It's sort of triangular shape, but not really. It's heavily landscaped, as you can see in the pictures that were provided in the packet. There is a wood porch and deck in the front here off of Gladstone and in the rear off of Gilmar, which is the front technically, there is a concrete patio at grade and there's grass landscaping around the balance of the property. For what we're proposing, the sketch on the right here is, we want to do several things. We want to mainly in the crook of the house here, create a wood deck level with the first floor and a wood deck level with the second floor.
How high up's the first floor?
Excuse me?
How high up is the first floor from the ground? Or how high up will the deck be?
It's approximately two feet. The house meets the FEMA requirements for flood down.
I'm an appearance-wise, how high is it off the ground?
Excuse me?
How high is it off the ground?
The deck, it's approximately two feet off the ground. And the second-floor deck above that is at the elevation of the second floor and I believe it's an eight-foot ceiling, so it's about nine feet or so above the first-floor deck. Additionally, in the rear, but technically the front on Gilmar, we want to have some brick pavers at grade to have an outdoor seating area. We also want to have a five-foot-high vinyl fence here to create some privacy off of the street here. We want to also put just a shower head, no enclosure, a shower on the small side yard here. To compensate for increasing the impervious coverage, we're proposing to remove some wood decking porch in the front off of Gladstone. It's not a wash, but it comes pretty close. And that's basically what we're proposing to do.
Let me walk through it. On the front yard setback, we're asking for a second-floor deck, IP versus 1.08.
That's correct.
On Exhibit A2, you've laid out some tables and chairs, so we're going to have a sliver off the master bedroom?
Yes. This is not on your drawings, but we, in our discussions, we decided that we wanted to show, this here shows a small table and some chairs with the proposed deck and we thought, okay, well, what if we just sliced it off and took the curve and made it just truly triangular shape, showing a small table and chairs and then a couple of chase lounges. It really makes it very difficult to use that space, that couple additional feet, if that, approximately, makes it much more desirable and much more usable. My concern is cutting it down in size, is somebody tripping and falling over the rail because of the congestion of, you know, the possible furniture out there.
Do you see the second-floor deck having any type of an impact on air, light, or open space?
No. Because of the nature of the property, it really doesn't affect the neighbor to, on this side, and there is no other neighbors except across the street and it's, Gilmar Circle is a wide road and it has no effect on anybody on Gladstone.
Roger's comment was to make sure it was not going to be enclosed in the future. Are we agreeable to that comment?
Yes. Neither of the decks will be enclosed.
Once again, the second variance we needed is fence setback, technically the front yard. We're asking for a five-foot fence setback down in that corner.
Right here.
And that setback, that fence blocks up against our neighbor's fence, who's a six-foot fence surrounding their pool.
That is correct.
And--
I have an aerial photograph from Google Maps showing the pools here, the adjacent property. This is, that's the subject property, there's the pool that we're talking about and the next property over is a pool also.
The fence is just going this--
Right, right along here.
That's it?
Yep.
Once again, do you think that that fence is going to have any type of an impact on the character of the neighborhood?
No. I mean, the adjacent fence on the adjacent property is six-foot high, we only want a five-foot-high fence.
The outdoor shower, it's not a shower enclosure, it's just a shower head.
That is correct.
But that shower head still protrudes. Technically, you need three feet and we're, our wall, we're only looking 2.6.
That is correct.
So we are asking for a variance to have a shower head technically along that rear alleyway or side alleyway?
That is correct. And we don't want to enclose the shower area because it's really the only way for fire department access on that narrow side of the building.
And once again, there was a comment about putting some type of drainage in and we're agreeable with putting drainage in that would comply with however Roger wants it.
Yeah, we'll put in whatever drainage, you know, that we can come to a conclusion with Roger.
And I think the last variance was we were a percent off of landscaping, because technically the whole 200 feet is classified as front yard.
That is correct.
We did remove some wood decking along Gladstone, so we landscape that, but the pavers, even though they're decorative, technically counts as a permit.
That's correct.
We were about 1 percent off--
Yeah, just shy of meeting the requirements.
Once again, from a overall perspective, landscaping in the front yard, do you think that we're going to create a new aesthetic appearance?
Oh, I think it's, I mean, we're just continuing, you know, at least on the adjacent two properties where they have the pools and the fence, it's the same kind of condition that we're assuming was previously approved by one of the Margate boards.
Overall, do you think that these variances could be randomly, causing any type of detriment to the neighborhood?
I see no detriment to the neighborhood in any way whatsoever.
Any type of detriment to the zoning plan?
No, I don't think so.
Once again, do you think it falls truly within a C1 category based upon its size, shape, and function?
Yes. This is the very unique lot configuration and it ends up, if you want to do anything, you're going to have to come in front of the board.
I don't have any other questions for Mr. Sedrain. I will open up some here.
Well, do you agree to Roger's suggestion to provide the street trees to meet the ordinance?
Yes.
Yes, we'll provide the trees.
As a condition.
For the architect.
Wait a minute. Craig, he's speaking.
Hi, Craig. Presently there, a line of four or five bushes enclosing, so to speak, that existing patio. Are they remaining or are they going to go?
They will be removed.
She sounds more--
They will be removed.
You want to yell out for the crowd?
No.
I could hear you.
I know.
Just say please for the record.
Give me the microphone, please.
They will be removed and a, what is it, like a--
The question is, the landscaping in the front that you have around your front porch now.
Yes.
Is that's going to remain?
No, it's not. It's going to be removed.
And what are you going to be doing with landscaping around the front porch?
Flowers and little shrubs, something non-true.
In front of the fence?
Yes.
The property next door, as you mentioned, a six-foot continuous fence, which essentially disappears because there are continuous evergreens planted in front of it, which really reduces the visual impact. If you run, you mentioned the vinyl fence, Tom, I assume it's the standard white vinyl fence. That's going to look kind of harsh. It would certainly be much more attractive if you replanted some type of evergreen there.
Are you looking for some trees in front of the white vinyl fence along Gilmar Circle there?
Or trees, shrubs.
Or shrubs of some kind?
Yeah.
Yeah.
To essentially hide the fence. And it would blend very well with the property next door.
Right.
Yeah, the applicant agrees that they will put some low shrubs in front of the vinyl fence.
I think they should be as high, try to hide the fence.
Any other questions?
Craig?
Yeah, a question for the architect. You have a large radius that goes to within 1.1 foot of the property line. Did you entertain any ideas of making a neo-angle there where you could pick up another foot and a half and having it squared off more? A neo-angle, you know what I'm talking about there, correct?
Yes, mhm.
Does anybody know what I'm talking about?
No.
With a neo-angle. It comes off the wall, instead of having a complete radius from building to building, it comes out two feet, goes on an angle 45 degrees, and it goes back on an angle. Then you would pick up, you would pick up a foot and a half or something like that on a straight run from the, equal to the property line. Did you entertain that idea at all?
About the applicant--
You stated the radius.
Yeah. Well, the applicant had suggested that they wanted to have a radius deck there.
That brings it to within 1.1 foot of the property line.
That is correct.
Where you could probably be about two and a half foot if you did a straight line.
My concern about cutting back is if you look on these diagrams, breakout floor plans for the decks, that it really does not leave us a lot of room to put any kind of furniture out there.
You'd only be taking off a small, like you're pennant on that house, you know, that one problem, the small area. That's what, if you look at your print, it would only be like one line or two lines there.
Right.
Well, Mr. Thomas, you also remember that we have about a three-foot alleyway before we hit the sidewalk, so technically--
Two foot, three feet? Yes.
So we're about three feet, three and a half--
Yeah, I know, I know that, yeah.
Off the sidewalk that way and then, once again, you're on a very wide street there and it's, I mean, we don't see any impact from the first floor, second floor.
I just thought a neo-angle would work much better than the radius that you have and not encroach as much, that's all.
Just to kind of give some perspective, because I'm familiar with that corner I go by maybe once a day, I live at 300 Gladstone, and it's such a dead corner, more or less in that situation, you're never going to have vehicles pulling up to the back of that home and making right, because Gladstone's a one-way, right-of-way. So there's never going to be, just for the board members, any traffic, vehicle traffic that it would be blocking any right-of-way, any view. It'll actually make the neighborhood more beautiful, because they're using the space in a pretty way. For whatever that helps, just some perspective.
Anybody else on the board have any questions? Is there anyone here for the public that would like to comment? Public portion is closed. Any other comments from the board? Will you read it with the conditions, Dan?
This is an application for C variances. The applicant's requested C1 variances and C2 variances. C1 mainly because of the shape of the lot, just a kind of unique lot, triangular. It limits a lot of the setbacks and development without certain variances. They're asking for a front yard variance for the second-floor deck on Gilmar, requirement's five feet, proposed 1.08 feet. Front yard landscape on Gilmar, 60 percent required, 59.1 percent is proposed. Fence setback on Gilmar, five feet is required, .5 feet is proposed. The outside shower, which Mr. Callahan described, is essentially just a shower head coming out of the wall. Technically requires three feet and their proposal because of the shower head sticking out is 2.6 feet. All the conditions that were set forth in Mr. McLaren's report, no enclosures on the decks, I'm losing my voice, I apologize, no enclosures on the decks, and shrubs in front of the fence as described by Mr. Wazleski.
And street trees.
And four, well, that's part of the report, and four street trees is part of the report.
Right.
That would be the motion and the affirmative, so you can ask someone to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Your motion? Please. Thank you.
I'll second.
Seven votes.
Clem Wazleski.
My only two concerns were if there was going to be an enclosure for the shower that would block the alley and lack of landscaping in front of the fence, both of which have been addressed. Other than that, I don't think there would be any negative effect on the neighbors or the neighborhood, so I vote to approve.
Mike Richmond?
Yeah, I also lived at Gilmar Circle at one point in my life and there's really not a lot of traffic that goes around that way, so I don't really see any detriment to having the fence so close to the property line and the second-floor deck protruding won't affect the sight view of any cars. I think the, obviously, the landscaping is really de minimis and also with the shower head, I don't see any disadvantage to that, so I'm going to vote yes.
Margaret Guber Nalti.
Based upon the nature of the property, the size, the shape and the location, I feel there's no negative impact to the neighborhood. I think that they, because the fence is the same as the adjacent properties, it flows with the rest of the neighbors, I think it's a nice improvement and enhances the property and I approve of the application.
Mike Cristaldi.
I see no negative impact, as the rest of the board members have already previously stated. I see that it's going to be an add to the house and to the neighborhood, really. I approve the application.
Craig Pomisano.
I have to agree with the other board member's assessments. The house has two front yards, it makes it very difficult and it's, the street is pretty quiet down there, there's really no negatives. I approve the project.
Despina Hess.
I also vote in favor of the application. It will, it's a difficult situation on the corner there and it's actually going to improve the view from both sides of the home. When you have that fence, it'll kind of be uniform with the neighbors, you'll have the increased landscaping. The landscaping already is beautiful, I'm sure it'll continue to be. I don't see it affecting any air views for the neighbors. Essentially, all you have is the open wide street, so there's lots of air, light for the homeowner and each of the neighbors. So for all those reasons, I vote in favor of the application.
Rich Patterson.
Well, I feel that it really is a hardship having your front yard be 75 percent of your property line. It really limits what you can do and causes you to get these. I feel that's a hardship and other than that, I agree with everything the board said. I approve the application.
Application passes seven to nothing.
Thank you very much.
Next case. If anyone's here for the next case, 8204 Bay Shore Drive West, that case has been settled Is that the next one? The next case is a D variance, so Tom Collins and Jimmy Gallantino will recuse themselves. Just those two. 8106 Ventnor Avenue LLC. 8106 Ventnor Avenue, block 109.02, lot 14, in the S25 district to grant a D variance, site plan for first-floor office space, change of use, and possibly others. Taxes and water are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our report is dated May 26, 2016. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to change the use of an existing building from a general with a dentist office to a general office. This type of use is not permitted within the S25 residential zoning district. Waivers requested? No waivers have been requested, but a variance application checklist should be provided or waiver requested for that. My comments, the most recent use is that of the dentist dental office, which has been closed for some time. The proposed use as an office for construction is similar to a boutique studio, which will likely not draw as many visitors as a dental office. The apartment's predated the proposed use, the number of existing and proposed apartments shall be addressed by the applicant. The applicant needs to address parking as well. The applicant also needs to address hours of operation. The applicant proposes no physical changes to any exterior features. In other words, there's no bulk changes. A lighting plan may be required and trash collection and recycling need to be addressed as well. For variance relief and waiver relief for the following contains for D variance for special reasons, requirements of the statute are also referred to as the positive criteria for a use variance. Is the applicant's purport to show special reasons in order for the board to grant relief under subsection D. Generally, there are sufficient special reasons for the grant of a D variance under two broad circumstances. When the refusal to allow the project would impose on the applicant an undue hardship and/or when a proposed project carries out a purpose as defined in New Jersey statute as 40 colon D or 55D dash two. Promotion of zoning purposes, promotion of general welfare, promotion of safety, free-flow of traffic, promotion of appropriate population densities and concentrations, and promotion of a desirable visual environment. The variance sought require testimony from the applicant to satisfy the above criteria. If the board finds the testimony provided provides evidence that supports the variances, then I would recommend that below recommendations, if not already done, be a condition of approval. No further comment.
Gentlemen, Eric Goldstein on behalf of the applicant. With me tonight, I have the managing member of the limited liability company, Mr. Jeffrey Calloner, as well as expert in the field of architecture, John Obelenas, both of whom will be testifying, so-- So just by way of background, this is the old Dr. Finkelson's dental office, which has three apartments connected with it. In February of this year, we went to Roger Rubin and tried to figure out how this initially became commercial development in a residential zone, went back 20 or more years looking for variances and could not find any. And it was determined that probably the best thing to do, rather than try to keep that pre-existing non-conforming use going, would be to come into the board with a new application. The only thing we're seeking is to change the use, which is already office, from the type of office use, which is dental, to what will be Mr. Calloner-- type of office use, which is dental, to what will be Mr. Calloner's corporate offices, a general administrative office with probably three or four people there on any given day. The use itself will be far less intensive than a dental office with people coming and going. It won't be for anything other than Mr. Calloner and one or two other employees. There won't be anybody there on the weekends for the dental office, and for the most part, there won't be anybody coming and going, it'll just be Mr. Calloner and his staff. So, rather than attempt to keep the use grandfathered, Roger Rubin said, "We can't have enough information together to justify," or "we don't have enough information together to justify the change in use." We're here tonight to satisfy that request. It's, the applicant's belief that this type of development, even though it's already in the, in the structure, the three apartments and the commercial office on the first floor, meets Margate's planned zone, it's commercial in an area where we're one block away from the border of the CBD zone, the Commercial Business District, and Mr. Calloner's proposal, which you'll hear from him from us in a second, is to bring his corporate office headquarters to this property where Margate's losing commercial, he wants to bring much-needed new commercial. And Jeff, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask you to testify about that presently, so if you don't mind, just take the microphone and please speak into it, and just describe to the board what you plan to do with the property, with the office only, the apartments are going to remain the same, but with the office only, describe what you're going to do and how you're planning to bring your company to the structure that used to be Dr. Finkelson's office.
Okay, hi. So, when we say construction, office, administrative, it sounds like there could be, the question I guess you might pose is, what are you going to be storing there, how many people are going to be coming there? There, we know, nothing's stored there, it's strictly office. I live two, two or three blocks away anyway, so I'll probably walk. Anthony, my building partner, will probably be out and about most of the time, and then we have one other employee who will be there day to day.
What does showroom mean? Didn't it say showroom on the plans?
You know what, so, we're talking an area of how many square feet approximately? 900 square feet. So, just that size alone, we can't have a whole lot. We have two, the way it's designed is, and he'll go over it, but two offices, a front area, which I guess is labeled showroom, but Elena, that's where her office will be, is in the showroom, so, samples, samples of roofing samples, siding samples, we don't have a lot, will be in there, and then one small conference room in the back. That's the, that's the layout.
You're not proposing any additional apartment development of the property, according to the three that are there now, to the same three that will be there in the future?
That's correct. They are too occupied, and they've been for a few years now by the same tenants. Then there's one, a one-bedroom apartment behind that eventually I will plan to fix up and try to, to rent out. But as far as the exterior structure, no change to the footprint, no, no change at all.
Cosmetic? Any cosmetic change to the building, or just as is, or?
If it's found, if it's found that the windows are leaking to a point where we have to remove some, then we're going to talk about it, but that's not the plan at this point.
It's fair to say that the interior of the apartments needed some renovation, they've become a little rindarian, you're fixing them up to part of this application, where it was?
Where, where it's needed, I mean, but they, the, I haven't even been in the one, to be quite honest, the one upstairs, they've been there for several years, and they pay their rent, and they seem, they seem happy. The young guys that live upstairs, I've been there several times, and we'll just make improvements as, as we would normally, but they don't seem to have any major issues.
You don't propose to have a lot coming and going with other people besides your staff, or?
So, when we say showroom, from time to time, we'll have a prospective client come in and, and sit in the showroom or conference room, whatever we're going to call it, to review plans, go over material selections, things like that, just a place to go, because right now it's in my house, and that doesn't work.
Are you, excuse me, are you purchasing the building, or do you already own it? You leasing it? Well, let's?
No, I'm the owner.
You own the building now?
Yes.
Will there be any signage?
Yes, but I'll, I'll keep it to whatever the ordinance suggests. Right now, the sign is still out there that shows the big smiley face, so I imagine I would, I may use that, but I, but yes, I would, I would certainly want to have signage, and whatever I can get there, whether that's the 35 square feet.
As a condition of the approval, the applicant would comply with Margate's sign ordinance when he finally gets a sign designed to put on the outside of the building.
For commercial use?
Correct. Unless the board has any questions for Mr. Calloner.
Hours of operation?
Your hours of operation.
It's, for me, I work all day.
When would you?
I don't know that, I didn't, I honestly didn't think that far in advance as to post hours of operation on the door, but we are open at nine, and we'll close at six.
Monday through Friday, Monday through Saturday?
Monday to Friday, yeah.
Monday through Friday?
Right.
No weekend hours?
No, and, not posted, but, again, when, when we'll have people that want to come in and speak with us, and more often than not, they'll say, "Well, can you meet us on a Saturday? We, we're down the shore anyway." If that happens, then, then sure, then we'll go over and meet.
And how many employees will be there one time?
Eight.
Okay.
And that's really all it can fit. It's not a big place.
We're not asking, we're asking because we just want to make sure what's going on, because we have to put them as part of the approvals for you, just to understand, we're not like trying to pick it apart or anything, we're just.
And the parking, the parking's interesting, which, which he'll talk about, but I understand the parking is reserved for the apartments, which, for whatever reason, they don't use now, and then there's a garage that they don't, that that's ours, they don't use that.
Roger, have a question. On commercial signs and residential signs, we're different, but we don't have anything on banners.
Right.
Okay.
They'll comply with the commercial?
I mean, no, and I think it's smart marketing that you do with your, your banners that you put out, that you put on the fence and all, I think it's a neat idea, but I think the board should know about it.
That's not going to exist at this property.
Yeah, no banners proposed, other than the maximum sign, I think 35 square feet will be it.
That's residential.
Correct, we're not going over that.
Okay, but you're going for commercial?
Right.
Which will change the sign's size.
Whatever we can do, the max per, the zone, we would ask for, and we're going to come back in to Mr. McLaren for approval of that, we wouldn't put anything up before that yet.
I would suggest that a condition would be, the only sign would be on the Venter Avenue and off the side street.
Acceptable.
And two other items that need to be addressed is the parking, I need some more information on the parking, and exterior lighting.
So, for that, I would turn it over to Mr. Obelenas. For purposes of his testimony, he's a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, he has testified before this board and several other boards in the state on many occasions, unless the board wants to hear his qualifications, I would ask that he be accepted as an expert in the field of architecture.
Accepted.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Obelenas, can you walk us through the parking issue as requested on the board? And the lights?
Yes, thank you. Parking, as you can see, there's private parking on the side for the residences, there's a driveway at the end of the building, and there's a garage, like I said, it's probably not being used, but because of the nature of the house or the building sitting on the property, that's the only place that, that is available for a spot, and that's dedicated to the residential. Everywhere else, there's no room from the building to the property line where you can put a parking spot. So it's an existing condition that will not allow us to use any of that part of the, of the landscaping for, for parking spaces. As to the lighting, we're in the process of completing the construction drawings, my guess would be that we'll use a, a wall lighting that lights the, I guess, around the perimeter for safety, security, pretty much side lighting, but nothing elaborate, just to show entrances and.
As part of the application, to the extent that the lighting would affect any of the neighbors, we would certainly try to limit that, we don't want a situation with another blue house, we're going to keep the lighting appropriate, but also minimal, to blend into the neighborhood as much as possible.
I would suggest that the lighting that you install, if any, be more appropriate, more suitable for residential neighborhood and commercial use.
Certainly. And as a condition, if the board sees fit to approve, applicant will accept that, we don't want to upset any of the neighbors.
So we addressed the parking, we addressed the lighting, was there a third thing? Trash collection, I think, trash?
Oh, yeah.
I'm just reading off the list that we saw. My guess would be that there's probably a utility area down by where the staircase is, that we can hide recycling and trash receptacles out of sight.
Yeah, we really don't generate garbage, maybe trash, it's good, probably less than a residential trash.
True, but you might have, if you have any additional tenants, you would. So, make the appropriate contact with Franz Idler from Public Works for any trash pickup and recycling for office use.
Question?
That's all I have to say.
Are you going to be using the garage? Is the garage in use, are you storing supplies and things in there? It doesn't fit a car in the garage.
I have no plans of a car in the garage.
But you're using the garage for storage?
Yeah. Office supplies, yeah. Not, not building supplies.
Mr. Obelenas, obviously you're aware that this is a D variance, there are enhanced burdens approved for this type of variance, so just want to go through a few things with you for the record. In your opinion, as a professional architect licensed in the state of New Jersey, does this application promote the zoning purposes of Margate of encouraging commercial development as commercial development is dwindling here in the city?
I believe it does, yes.
And as your, in your experience as a professional architect, does this application, since we're only going from three apartments and an office to three apartments and an office, promote the general welfare of the city of Margate?
It does.
And in your professional opinion, as an architect licensed in the state of New Jersey, does the fact that the building footprint isn't being expanded, and there will be less traffic on the site than there was when there was a dental office, fit within the promotion of appropriate population densities and concentrations in the city of Margate?
I wish I could say more, I know, I tend to talk a lot, but, yeah.
It's fine, John.
Having said that, having established the requirements of the D variance, and having Mr. Calloner testify regarding his desired use of the building, unless the board has any further questions, the applicant will rest.
I have a question. Hi.
Joe?
Can, can we make sign, the sign size a condition of this particular application?
Can we what?
Make the size of the, the size of the sign a, a condition in this particular application.
Well, he's going to put only what's allowed there.
The 35, right?
I don't know what it is.
I think it's 35.
It's a 35.
35, okay.
That's what I was bringing up.
The question?
That's residential, this is a commercial property.
What's commercial?
It is 35.
But he agreed to stay within?
The 35?
I, whatever it is.
The agreement is to stay within the adjacent commercial district standard for signs, correct?
But it's more, this is more of a residential area, though.
You, and, but the answer to your question is, yes, you can make that change.
I think we should do.
The board wants to limit to, to less than that?
Yeah, I think it should be smaller, not larger.
You have to call that standard as a condition. I mean, what's the existing sign there now for, just approximate measures?
Tell us, that strange sign, it's a smile.
Big smile.
You know, and Mr. Calloner said five by five, which is a 25, that's 10 square feet less, would, would work for him if that's acceptable to the board.
So make it 25 square feet?
I don't know if it would be a square, but 25 square feet, yeah.
Well, 25 square feet size.
It'll be less.
Yeah. Okay.
So, do you roll?
25.
The applicant would accept that as a condition of the approval.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Says 32 square feet for development. 32 square feet is required. Well, he agreed to 25. We're done. Right. Okay, anything else? Anything else?
No, no, we are not continuing, we're ready to rest.
You are done? Yes. Mike, you have a question?
Time by time, hopefully, we will say.
Oh, stop it. It's not residential, it's facing Venter Ave, it's on the Venter Avenue side. Right, it's one block away from the residential, and he's making it 30 percent smaller than what's allowed.
It's no sign enforcement anyway, the city's saying.
Your building?
No, my building's fine.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is there anyone here for the public that would like to make a comment? Any neighbors? Please step forward and be sworn in.
Hi.
You have to be sworn in first.
My name's Ed Williamson, I live at One South Haverford. And? I do.
Go ahead.
I live across the street, I've been there for 20 years.
You're on, on Venter Avenue?
No, I am on Haverford, directly fronting the apartments.
One north or one south?
One south.
Okay.
I am on one south, directly across.
Okay.
Number one, it's a non-compliant property to start with in a single-family residential. And as far as parking, and I'm saying that the tenants have been there a long time, totally false. The apartments turn over all the time, there's kids in there, there is one family that lives upstairs, a husband and a wife and a little girl that have been there a while, but all the others turn over. They have plenty of parties there, and there's plenty of parking that, all over the streets when you come home, there's not even, besides beer bottles and everything else that I pick up.
We're not considering any of the apartments, Brian, you're considering the use of the first floor.
And my understanding is that the reason it was only allowed to be a dental office before, and it got a variance because it was for the good of the community, being a doctor. I'm not certain that a construction office is for the good of the community, and you're just jamming more in, which is really a single-family residential area in a non-compliant property.
Has it been there as long as you've been there, or, we were just trying to find out how long it had been?
The property, the property has been there as long as I've been there.
No, I mean, as a dental office, there is an office.
The dental office, I believe the dental office was there when I moved there 20 years ago.
That's as far back as we could go, we couldn't go back.
I mean, I moved there in 96, you checked the record, I moved there in 96, and it was always a dentist office in the apartments, and I'm not sure how it got to be an apartment because it's non-compliant and a single-family, but it.
That's what we couldn't find out, that's.
Right, but I mean, to me, by putting a, now a, a commercial office, you're, you're just compounding the problem. I mean, everything around it, I don't even know if there's any other apartments in Margate. I mean, I really don't, and you're now going to put that, and you're now, you got all single-family homes around there, and I just, I just object to it.
Okay.
I mean.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come up and be sworn in. Please speak into the mic, I can't hear you.
Joseph Israeli.
Before you start, Sir Jackie, could you give us the spelling of how you spelled his name?
Israeli? Yes. I-S-R-A-T-L-I.
Okay. Thank you.
It's hard to hear you, if you could just speak into the mic.
I'm the neighbor.
There you go.
I'm the neighbor of this property, and I concur with Mr. Williamson, and with everything he said. This property is not, was given for benefit of the, of the community. Variance that is, that is requested is against that, that idea.
I'm not sure what you said.
I think he agrees, he agrees with the prior speaker.
You're against the project for the same reasons as the prior speaker?
Yes, that's what I said.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, how long have you been there?
Six years.
Six years.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure whether you were for it or against it. All right, thank you.
That Mr. Williamson.
Okay, wait a minute. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Public portion is closed.
Just to address the gentleman who objected, and understanding that, you know, apartments are apartments, and Jeff wasn't running the apartments before, and now he is, he can certainly put controls on what the tenants do, it doesn't sound like they're objecting to, well, maybe it does sound like that, they're objecting to the office, but they're going to have a less intense office use now, and the apartments aren't going away, the apartments will be apartments whether this is granted or denied, the apartments are already there, so the only question is, do you have three apartments and an office, or do you have three apartments and Jeff finds a dentist to rent it to, because at that point, the use would be maintained?
Could they put four apartments in there without changing the use?
No, you're increasing density, it's another D variance.
That would be another one, so the only thing you could do would be another doctor's office, then.
So, you know, I think this greatly decreases the parking and intensity of the street, the fact that they don't like their neighbors who happen to be the tenants, and they have parties, well, you know, I don't know what to say, other than hopefully. No, you're increasing density, it's another D variance.
That would be another one. So the only thing you could do would be another doctor's office then?
So, you know, I think this greatly decreases the parking and intensity of the street. The fact that they don't like their neighbors who happen to be the tenants and they have parties, well, you know, I don't know what to say other than hopefully those tenants change and Jeff can put some controls on that. And I'm sure he can work with the neighbors to do so, but I'm not sure that the objections that were put on by the two individuals validly contradict what Mr. Obelenas testified to as an expert as to the purposes of zoning that are advanced by the application, simply because they don't like the neighbors and they don't like the fact that some benefit to the community was granted by having an orthodontist. I'm not sure that there is one, other than kids have places...
Well, we have no records back there.
Yeah, I know, we checked.
Craig, keep silent, Mr. Parkes.
How long have you owned the property?
So the property, what's that, February?
February. Oh, you've owned it since February?
And I would say that I have never, since, I've only owned it since February. And the gentleman pointed out that the husband and wife and the daughter upstairs are fine, it's all of the others. There's only one other. And since I've owned it, it's been the same guys, one's a teacher, and I don't know what the other young man does. And I've never received one complaint. This is the first time I'm hearing about it. So we can put, we can speak to them for sure. I've never heard about it.
Anyone else? You're done? Okay. Would you read the motion?
I saw something about a site plan application, Roger. Is a minor site plan application for approval for this?
There is not.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure if they were, if they're asking for it, that we put it. All right, so...
There was no bulk recyclers? There was no bulk changes? Okay.
Okay. I think Mr. Bergman, however, is correct. Initially, when we came in, we thought we were going to need site plan approval at the same time. Turned out we didn't, but we advertised and applied for, just to be safe. But this is just D variance, as Mr. McLaren...
All right, now that that's clarified, for D variance relief, for the change of use, essentially a D1 variance, Mr. McLaren put down the appropriate standards in his report. The applicant has the burden to show that there is either a hardship or that the request for the difference in use is, benefits the general welfare as part of the D2 standards. So it would be approval for that. The conditions are that the sign for the property will not be more than 25 square feet. There will be three apartments continuing, the offices on the first floor, I believe, is that correct?
That is correct.
Testimony was that there's three employees in the building for the company. The lighting will be in line with the residential standards. The hours operations, as testified to, are 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. And also, one of the conditions is that the applicant will contact Public Works for the trash collection requirements and all the other conditions that are set forth in the report are...
That is correct, Mr. Bergman. And if it pleased the board, the one thing that we did not address, and I would like to address it before you finalize your motion, is that Mr. Obelenas was not 100% done. He just does want to explain the negative criteria, because obviously we've got positive and negative. He testified to the positive. So, Mr. Obelenas, we got kind of tied up in going around and around. Can you just state to the board, whether in your professional opinion and your capacity as a licensed architect, the granting of this application would have any negative impact upon the neighbors or the zone plan of the city of Margate?
Thank you. I don't see any negative, only because this building fits in a neighborhood by size, by massing, by, you know, design and stuff. So it does fit within the boundaries, whether it's an office or not. So there's no negative feature for that.
I apologize for not getting that in sooner, but didn't want to let that go to...
Totally understand. So with that additional testimony, the motion remains the same, just with the addition of a negative criteria on the record at this point in time. So if I could have the chairman ask for a motion for a D variance.
I have a question. I apologize, I didn't want to interrupt. I didn't know if it was more appropriate to ask before or after you read. For myself, if you could answer this question and for the neighbors as well, I'm just trying to clarify that our purpose is merely to vote whether or not we are in favor or against changing the use from the non-existent orthodontist office to a now small office for the applicant. Even if we vote no, we're against the application, it's not going to somehow revert to a one single-family home residential zone.
No, it's already has a pre-existing use as a dental office.
Correct.
So a medical office is really already approved.
So the apartments will remain, even if we were to vote against this application, the three apartments remain and the commercial downstairs doctor use would remain as well?
It would, yes.
Okay.
So the question really is, it's whether or not the intensification issue comes up in these applications as to the approval for the medical office. If it's more intense than maybe what they're proposing now, that has to go into your analysis of it.
Thank you so much, thank you.
How long has the dental office not been there?
Dr. Finkelson left, I want to say he left shortly after closing since February.
Of this year?
Yeah.
It was open as an office until then?
Yeah. And he went over to Linwood, I think he had another property, but he's still practicing. He didn't take a sign, he'll have it...
You didn't pay extra for that, did you?
One further question. John, are you a licensed planner in New Jersey?
Okay. Hear a motion? Craig.
Clem Ozleski.
The apartment's a very interesting problem. If there's not an office and they wanted to convert it to an apartment, they'd have to come in for that, am I correct?
Yes.
So it's either an office, an apartment, or an empty space. Since it's been an office for so many years and the intended use certainly appears to be considerably less intense, I think that's a reasonable basis for approving it. I vote in favor.
Mike Richman.
I agree with Clem. It's been an office for over 20 years. I've actually had my kids at that office and the use was much more intense as a orthodontist office than it will be as a builder's office. So I'm going to approve the application.
Margaret Cooper Nolte.
I agree with Clem as well. I think it lends itself to the neighborhood. I think it is less intense in terms of parking and people coming and going. And I know Mr. Callender has been nothing but a benefit to our community in what he has done in the city of Margate. And I know he will treat this property the same, and I approve of the application.
Mike Cristaldi.
There's one thing I'd like to clarify with, is the sign. The sign is only on Vender Avenue?
We agreed to that.
That's one of the conditions, Vender Avenue, no greater than 25 square feet.
Okay. Then as the rest of the board members, I think it's a better use for the building with less traffic and parking problem. I vote yes.
Craig Pomisano.
I also have to agree with the board members. Less use and that's all we can do with it. I approve it.
Desperahas.
I also agree with Clem as well as Ms. Cooper Nolte. I feel like the applicant is conceding us already and letting us know there's going to be a smaller than permitted sign. It's only going to be on the Vender Avenue side. Taking into consideration the comments from the neighbors, I think those concessions address their needs. Additionally, we're going from a heavy-traffic doctor, dentist office. There was more employees, most likely you have a hygienist, you have the dentist, you have the customers coming in, so there's more traffic in that scenario. Now we have much less employees, much less cars, so there'd be less parking issues, in my opinion. The purpose of my question as to, in the event that the board voted against this application, it's not going to alleviate the primary concerns that I heard from the neighbors as to apartment tenants. They're going to remain. And I think by voting in favor of the application to change the commercial use from the dentist to a small boutique, I think we're improving the situation. And I think that the applicant will maintain the property nicely, find nice tenants, and I think it will be an improvement to the neighborhood. So I vote in favor of the application.
Joe DeGorolamo.
It's going to be less intense, as previously stated by the other applicants. And there is nothing we can do with regard to the apartments. I think now the owner now is aware of why the situation, so I'm sure he'll correct that. I approve.
Rich Patterson.
I'd like to address the neighbors' concerns. I think everyone on the board would rather see a single-family home here. But this happens many times where neighbors come here to address their concerns. It's not something we have control over. It already is an apartment. We can't address that issue. So I don't want you to feel we're just ramrodding this through. Your concerns aren't something we can do anything about. We're still in the middle of a vote here. But if you want to talk to me after the... So with the less density than what's there, I also approve the application.
Okay, the application passes. Joe DeGorolamo's vote actually was not to be counted, so it passes seven to nothing.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Callender is going to make it a point, sir, if you want to hang out for a minute to discuss the apartment, maybe they can get together and make things a little bit easier for some of the neighbors. So thank you for that comment as well.
That would be great, if they could do that.
Have you two met? Have you met the owner? I think if you introduce yourselves now, I think...
Although I thought Joe's reasons were very good, even though they didn't count. So we thank you guys. That was very good. She didn't have to. I don't think, I think she just forgot to... No, you know, these are always seven. She made it nine, didn't she? I think it's five out of nine. I guess we got to ask Joanna if they can fit it on to next month, I don't think they
Next case is Adam Weiss, 11 South Iroquois Avenue, Block 110.02, Lot 7, in the S-25 District. To grant C variance for front yard setback for front porch landscaping and possibly others. Taxes and water are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfying. Before Mr. McLaren gives his report, I'd like to open the mic to Mr. Ballinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Chris Ballinson, on behalf of the Weissons, we are requesting that matter be carried until next month. We received Mr. McLaren's report today and hope to be able to welcome some modifications to the plan, which would not create any additional variance or any additional relief that would offset some of the concerns brought up in the report. So if we could carry that matter to next month, not be required to re-notice and make an announcement to see if that would be appreciated.
Is there anyone here that was here for that case?
So that...
No one's here.
So that day would be what, on June, is that June 30th? Or June?
Joanna, when's the next meeting?
Is it June 30th or June 23rd?
June 30.
June 30.
So June 30 and any, Chris, you'll waive any type of statutory approval requirements, correct? And then, all right, that's good.
Next case is Steven and Ashley Gantz, 8 South Pembroke Avenue.
Michael Richman's accusing himself.
What?
Blocks 117, Lot 12.02, in the S-40 District. To grant a C variance, front yard setback for roof over second-floor deck and possibly others. Taxes and water are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfying.
Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Board Chairman. My report dated May 25, 2016, for 8 South Pembroke Avenue, Block 117, Lot 12.02, in an S-40 zone. Background, the applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to construct a roof over an existing second-floor deck. A variance is requested for encroaching into the average front setback line for the front porch and the side yard setback line. My comments are as follows. The property was recently subdivided and the subdivision has created the side yard setback hardship variance for expansion of the roof porch. The first-floor roof porch is in a closed sunroom below the second-floor deck. Front yard setback to the porch roof could be considered de minimis as it is only a tenth of a foot and matches the existing porch. The applicant shall indicate what variances, if any, are required for the third-floor addition. Does the floor area comply with the city's ordinance? The second-floor plan they indicate to study is this, an existing study. I have no further comment.
Private question for our attorney. How could create a hardship? When they got a subdivision, they got what they got. We created a hardship from, can that be considered a hardship? Whatever you said you had a hardship from.
The new subdivision line created the hardship. Right.
Well, I mean, not, I can't make a legal determination of that, but it would be weighed appropriately if they subdivided. Are they two, are they two by-rate subdivisions or...
No, it was not a by-rate.
But the subdivision requested to maintain the existing home. And that created variances as to the side yard.
Right. All right, so then...
The reason why you're here is you're expanding a non-conforming setback.
Yes, yeah, sure, exactly, yeah. The setback's not getting any worse. There's an additional encroachment into the setback.
Who, just a quick question, who's the owner of the property that was subdivided? The same applicants?
No.
Okay, all right. So they purchased this lot to build a property?
Purchased the lot, the new standard's final.
Right, okay.
Wait, it was a spec house or they purchased the lot and built it? Oh, this is new standard. I'm sorry.
Steven and Ashley Gantz.
Hi.
Chris Ballinson for the Gantz's.
We're familiar with the Pembroke property, that's why we've been here before. Not with you, but...
Steven, yes.
I'd like to go look at the property again.
Nobody else showing, nobody else showing up.
Okay, good.
Steven and Ashley purchased the new standard existing home. Mr. Richman is doing a really awesome renovation, the whole house, they're keeping the house. And they're very pleased with it.
The garage is going to be under...
As we know, by maintaining the existing home and creating a billable lot next door, we're left with a setback on the right side, you look at the house and it's about like three feet, something like that, two feet, I think. The only relief that's been requested tonight is in order to put a roof on the second-floor deck which exists and have it look uniform with the effect of the deck covered. A right side yard setback, an encroachment...